Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the May 19th, 2025 School Committee meeting to order. And I'm going to start off by reading a brief statement because we have one member attending via Zoom. This meeting is being held remotely or in person as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may be informed of all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording? Other than our media?
I just identified.
Okay, and just, we have one school committee member online with us this evening, and that is Matt Cosman. Hi, Matt. All right, moving on, I just want to move this table back for a second. It's getting way from me. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the beautiful and deeply meaningful tribute that just took place earlier this evening, dedicating the new Foster School Library in honor of Camilla Roundtree. It's a powerful reminder of the impact one person can have in a community. Camilla's legacy lives all through the stories that we were talking about tonight, that we heard, the speeches that were given, the lives that she touched, and now through a space that will continue to inspire and support students for generations to come. It was an honor to be part, to listen and to be a guest at the celebration tonight, so thank you for inviting us.
We're grateful to the school committee for their support of dedicating that library to Camilla, so I'm very grateful of that.
All right, so moving on to our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. Would someone like to make a motion? We have three sets of minutes, so we have the first one, which is April 28th.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 28th, 2025.
Second. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, we will do a roll call vote, so all those in the fever, so we have, we'll start with Matt.
Aye.
John?
Epsidium.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, moving on to the April 29th meeting minutes from June 25th.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting on April 29th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
John?
Epsidium.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Moving on to 2.3, which is the May 5th meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from May 5th, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's John's first meeting minutes. It's very exciting. All right, moving on to item, which is three, which this is a portion of the meeting that we've set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to ask if anyone has a discussion on new business items on the agenda. If you have any questions that are unrelated to those items, just please raise your hand now, and I'll be happy to recognize you, otherwise. No one has any questions? I will move on. Anyone online?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, so four, number four is superintendent's report.
Great, well, first of all, I'd like to welcome the full school committee to the Foster School, so this is the first time we're hosting a school committee meeting this year out in one of the buildings, and thrilled that we're able to invite you here to the space this evening. Also, wanted to recognize another milestone for the Foster Building Project on Friday to the excitement of our Foster School students. We did officially open the Foster School playground, and so students enjoyed their first day of recess, and we had terrific reviews of the new playground, so happy that our students were able to enjoy that. And again, continue to be grateful to Foster families, staff, and students for their continued flexibility through the construction project, so we are, the end is in sight. And so work on the foster grounds, including the new parking lot, will continue through the summer months, and we're grateful that the building is nearly, nearly complete. Wanted to just highlight some of the Metco program updates that you will hear this evening. So this weekend, HPS students and families gathered to create art together at the Metco Family Painting Event, co-sponsored by the Hingham Unity Council and the Hingham PTOs. In other Metco news, as Jen Benham alluded earlier this evening, we were thrilled to dedicate the new Foster School Library in honor of Camilla Roundtree, who served as HPS Metco Director for over 40 years. We were joined this evening by HPS families, students, and Metco alumni, who shared memories of the impact that Ms. Roundtree had in our community. And as I mentioned this evening, we will, in a few moments, hear an update from our current Metco Director, Amy Jackson, who will share information about current Metco student enrollment, funding, and programming. We are in the home stretch of the year, which means that we are in the process of wrapping up both MCAS exams and AP exams. So the ELA Math and Science MCAS testing is now complete in grades three through eight. At HHS, ELA MCAS testing is complete with HHS Math and Biology MCAS upcoming. And just wanted to clarify that for the community, while MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement for high school students, grades three through 10 MCAS assessments will continue to be part of the accountability ratings for districts. As we appreciate the work of students and staff on the MCAS assessments. Additionally, over the past few weeks, we have been offering AP exams. Twenty-four different AP exams were offered encompassing all content areas, so again, grateful to the students and staff for their work on those exams. Given that it is May, we have a variety of celebrations of student work, and I wanted to highlight a few opportunities that we've had to highlight some of the students' artwork and other projects at the high school. So the Hingham High Arts and Technology Engineering Pathway Programs held a joint annual symposium on the evening of Thursday, May 6th. Seniors who fulfilled all the requirements of this two-to-three-year pathway earned their Arts Pathway or Technology Engineering Pathway Certificate, and got to show off some impressive portfolios. For those of you who joined us, the projects range from a jukebox musical to photos studying the music of Ireland, women's empowerment in music, some examples of really terrific 3D printing, and so again, student creativity very much on display in both the arts and technology domains. Also wanted to highlight our annual Global Citizens Symposium, which was a passion project of Erica Pollard for many years. So at this symposium, students who fulfilled all of the requirement of their pathway, again, got to show up off their portfolios. And these project topics range from traditional Chinese brush painting to the evolution of the Irish language to economic development in Panama. So again, really highlighting not only the students' content knowledge, but there was also an opportunity to enjoy global food, a performance from a Caribbean steel drum music band, and so again, just a celebration of students' learning. As we are nearing the end of the year, we are mindful that we have many students who will be making transitions this year, whether that be joining us in HPS for the first time as a preschooler or a kindergartner, making a transition from fifth to sixth, or from eighth to ninth, and also our students who are transitioning out into the world. And so many of these transition activities will be taking place over the next few weeks, including our kindergarten screenings and open houses that will take place this week, grade-five move-up day at HMS this Friday, and grade-eight students will be moving up to HHS on June 3rd. So we look forward to welcoming students at each of these transition points and to support them in making that transition successfully. And finally, just wanted to acknowledge that our class of 2025 is in the home stretch and doing their countdown. And so the seniors have their last day of classes on May 23rd, followed by the annual senior picnic and awards night coming up on May 7th. And so we wish our seniors a terrific last few days at HHS.
Thank you. That year flew by.
It did.
Okay, moving on to communications, and communications with superintendent. Student communications, our students are with us this evening, I'm sure. Enjoying AP exams being over. 5.3, other communications. All right, moving on to unfinished business, we have 6.1, which we have a few policies to go over from our last meeting, which are second reads. I will pass it over to Allee Anderson, who is Chair of our Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, so we have three policies. Two are new policies that we looked at last time, one being data and records retention, with the focus being on records from the school committee, and this mirrors the policy related to the students. And so we'll start with that one. If you have any EHB, if anyone has any questions? Nope.
Okay. I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve policy EHB, data and records retention.
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
No.
All right. Roll call vote, Matt? John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one is a policy regarding artificial intelligence. As discussed last time, this is a very general kind of overarching policy, just really focusing on the fact that we understand this is something that students will be using, as well as teachers, and that we want them to understand how to properly use it, and that this school district will develop a procedure related to this. Questions?
Just point out for people watching that there, I imagine some people will wonder why it's not a more robust policy here, and just the explanation of that is that this, the sort of robust part of the details, this will live in the procedures, not in the school committee policy, just to be able to keep up.
Yeah, and that's a great point. We don't specify any programs or websites or anything of that nature, just because the technology is changing so fast and evolving, so we don't want to be that specific in our policies talking about those types of things.
Any questions or comments? All right, roll. I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve policy IJD, IJNDG, artificial intelligence.
Second. Any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Excellent. And then the third and final policy we're looking at tonight is related to field trips. And this is the policy that we changed the language, and in the last meeting, we updated it further, just to clarify, because there was some wording that didn't make sense. But to allow for the superintendent, when they're out of state or overnight field trips, for the superintendent to approve those on behalf of the committee, and then to share that information with us, just to allow in time-sensitive situations, guests to not have to call another meeting, or for Katie to have to wait for all the members to be available.
All right, is there any questions from the audience?
I have one, actually. So J.J.H., I noticed that's included too below it.
Yes.
I guess maybe Policy Subcommittee can talk about it, but is that another area where we want to empower the superintendent if it was the last minute overnight trip?
Yes, we should apply and mirror it. Make sure I did look at it, and I didn't see any language, but I'll double check that.
Okay.
And make sure I can bring it to my team, so.
Thanks.
Any more questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
And actually, I did include it below, when we originally looked at it. I'll go through it one more time just to make sure.
Okay.
But we originally didn't find anything there. I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to policy IJOA field trips.
I'll second. Some more discussion? All right, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 6.2, which is discuss and review the 2025, 2026 School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments, enacted as appropriate. Put in the packet the subcommittees for the four that we discussed last meeting, and just the school liaisons, not the additional community liaisons, because as you can recall, we discussed this in the last meeting, we were going to go back to our previous community liaisons to discuss whether we felt we wanted to continue with that role, and kind of hear what everybody else has to say. Some of you emailed that back to me, and I think we're going to let it snow tonight.
I can speak on behalf of Climate Action Committee, actually as part of their one article, when they originally set it up, there is a school committee appointee
Okay.
within that committee, so we probably need to continue that.
Is there a term limit, or is it?
No, I wanted to ask them, I sent them an email to find out, because the other members who were appointed, it was three years, but we didn't have a term limit for the school committee.
It's a liaison role?
Yes, well, it's a non-voting member.
And that's the other thing I was discovering as I was doing some research, some of these roles aren't liaisons, some of them are more the role is bigger than liaison roles, and I kind of wanted to define everything so that we know what our roles are when we're going to these meetings.
Yeah, that's helpful. Now, just looking at this, so we created a new school building committee for the roofs at town meeting, we need to do some, someone on that, too.
So yeah, I think I discussed this with you, shouldn't we thought we would wait until we hear back from MSBA?
Oh, okay.
In
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
Probably October, November, December.
Yeah.
When we, hopefully, when we hear from back then.
We could definitely start thinking about who the possible, maybe at the finance committee, because I was thinking about who the possible people could be, or we could start socializing that thought process. And maybe, I don't know, we use the application bank in terms of volunteers for that as well.
That's true.
But we can think about the process for, some kind of process for getting residents to either apply.
Okay.
And maybe we can, similar to other committees that we've had, where we've opened up some kind of bank where people can apply or process, so people can apply, and then a deadline date, get it out, and then maybe we can use like November, October timeframe to get it going as well.
Yeah, maybe through the subcommittee, they can put a timeline, a timeline together for that.
Yes.
I think they were collecting through the talent thing, people interested generally in the school building committee already.
So, because the school committee will have the time moderator, and we have to also appoint someone as well.
And then I put on there for the Human Rights Commission, we will need to reappoint him at a future meeting, I just need to get the date down for when you were last appointed, trying to find the minutes from that.
Okay.
When your three, when your three years is up.
Right, it would be, I can look back, it'd be right around now, three years ago, because it was approved at town meeting, and then I think the following school committee meeting after town meeting that I was appointed.
All right. Does anyone have any other questions about what's on here now? Special Ed is still pending. Matt has a meeting scheduled for
Tuesday, May 27th.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. And they're gonna, they're gonna discuss that, at that meeting.
Yeah, so that's our subcommittee meeting, and that will be an agenda item to discuss with, with that. We've already talked to the chairs about it as a start, but
So right now, that subcommittee is working as the old subcommittee for now.
That makes sense.
And just to clarify, I'm assuming this is your thinking for East Elementary, John and I are sort of tag-teaming with that, because we're both people who are generally unavailable during the day, and will miss a lot of meetings, and probably almost all of the meetings. So he and I will contact Principal Hawksen.
Okay.
Work out a communication plan to be a good liaison without actually being at the meetings, so.
Top sure.
That's why there are two of us there, because.
Yeah, there's six schools and seven of us, so I thought that's the, there is a way to do it.
Perfect.
So according to our policies, we're supposed to vote on the subcommittees, do you want to wait until we figure out what's going on with Special Ed first, or should we vote on these, or?
It's up to you. I mean, I'm fine voting on these, and then we can add later.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. In that case, then I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the appointees to the 2025, 2026, and school committee subcommittees.
So we're appoint, we're, we're forming this, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to form the 2025, 2026 subcommittee as suggested.
A second. Any more discussion? No, okay, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Perfect timing. All right, moving on to new business. 7.1 is to receive an update of the Metco program. So thank you, we're thrilled this evening to have Amy Jackson, our Metco Director, to present an update on Metco enrollment and Metco programming and Metco funding, so thank you, Amy.
So the first slide is myself as the Metco Director, is the current Metco staff, and Ms. Tina Kukka, who is the Metco Interventionist. And currently, she served at all the elementary schools, as well as the middle school. She works in the classroom with each of our Metco students alongside the teacher to help them academically, as well as social and emotional support, contacting the parents as well about different events and different opportunities that are going on in the Metco program, as well as different updates on what's going on on the schools on a day-to-day basis. Next, we have the Metco enrollment. Currently, we have 43 students, 19 in our elementary schools, we have six students at East, four students at Foster, two students at Plymouth River, seven students at South, we have 12 total at Hingham Middle School, and 12 total at Hingham High School. And please note that our enrollment is depending on available seats. We're going to move on to the Metco grant, our funding. So we are funded through the state, and our total funding for FY25 was $400,251, and that's through the state. And because we are a Metco district, we receive additional grant opportunities. So the next grant we received with the help of Ms. Barbara Catala, thank you so much for writing that grant, we received an additional $31,444. And myself and Superintendent Robbins wrote, the next grant was a racial equity inclusive grant for an additional $15,000. And please note, these grants are only available, once again, because we are a Metco district, and are not available for all public schools and districts. And the purpose of the racial equity inclusion grant was to deepen our ongoing racial equity work, was aligned with the Metco 2.0. Next, we have the current student enrollment. We are going to bring in nine students from kindergarten to ninth grade. We have the new parent orientation, it's going to be on next Thursday, May 22nd, and we'll have nine families to come out to learn more about the fabulous Hingham Public Schools Metco program, that I'm really excited about. All the parents to talk to are just really excited to come to Hingham, which is really nice, because usually it's like, it's too far, but now we're not having that. Like, they heard a lot of good things about it, like, parents are really talking about all the activities that we're doing with our families, so they're really excited to come, so the word is getting out. So next, we're going to move to student program and family engagement activities. So we started off in October with our HBCU Black Student in University College Tour in partnership with Ms. Heather Rodriguez, who is head of the Guidance Department. We took about 15 students, Metco students and current Hingham students to RCC for the fair this year, and they had over 20 schools, which was really nice. The kids had a really good time, had an opportunity to meet with the admissions reps, talk to, they had financial aid workshops for the students, so it was really helpful, and they enjoyed it. And next, we had our Hingham Metco Family Night Out at the Franklin Park Zoo, where we had over 40 families to come out. It was just a time just for just the Metco families, just to get together, to get to know one another, see who's in what school, so the parents can see each other, so they could just have a conversation, just have the kids get together, because rarely do the kids get a chance to see each other outside of the bus or outside of school, so that was an opportunity for them to get together, and we had a really good time, we had a huge turnout, and everyone had a good time. Next, we had the Metco Advocacy Day at the State House, where I was able to bring eight of our current Metco students, and we were fortunate enough to have a tour of the Senate House. It was really, really nice. So Hingham and Cohasset were the only districts who actually got that tour, so the students were really excited and very happy about that. And next, we have the middle school in partnership with Derek Smith, we are bringing a guest speaker on next week, Mr. Anthony Valentine, and the topic is going to be on belonging, identity, and being your best self. So he's going to talk to the sixth and seventh grade, and then the eighth graders. He came a couple of years ago, and the students really liked him, they even asked to bring him back at the high school, because those current students are in the high school, so we're going to work on getting him back at the high school as well next year, so I'm excited about that. And he actually sent the video to go around to the students to get them prepared for his visit, so that went out on Friday to get the students excited about it. And then we had our Family Paint Day, which was this past Saturday. We have a beautiful photo of that, where everyone displaying their lovely artwork, and that was in partnership with the, yes, that was in partnership with the Hingham Unity Council, and all the PTO stepped in to help out, so that was really, really nice. And we're trying to make this an annual event every year, and we take turns, Hingham one year, Boston next year, so next year, we're back in Boston. So the parents are excited, anytime they get a chance to get together, have conversation, they love it, so we definitely want to keep that going. And we all witnessed the lovely Camilla Roundtree Library dedication, it was absolutely fabulous. And then our summer program, we have six students who are going to attend the Metco Summer School Program, which is going to be academic focus in the morning and enrichments in the afternoon, and that's going to be a five-week program, and that's going to be for children in kindergarten to sixth grade. So we're trying to get a few more signed up, but we got six, which is really nice, and we're excited about that. And then the next program we have for the summer is in partnership with Boston University, the Tech Revolution STEM Program. And that was made possible by the Metco Supplementary Grant that Barbara was able to write, and we have six students who are going to attend that. And these are just a list of some of the courses that they're going to take, Roller Coaster Design, Robotics, STEM in Medicine, Graphic Design, and Digital Arts. So they're going to do a week of each one of those, which is fascinating, because it's just focused on STEM, so we were really excited to get that going this year.
I wanted to roller coaster design.
When I started, I'm like, that's so nice, and then the STEM in medicine? Unbelievable. Like, why didn't have that when we were young? And next, we're celebrating our two, we have two fabulous seniors this year, we have Sanaya Riley Brooks, who's going to attend UMass Boston, she's going to study psychology. And we have Daniel Davis, who's going to attend Morehouse, and he's going to major in business and minor in film studies, and we know we're not surprised about that. That's all I have right now, is going to open it up for any questions.
I just think it's great, what you're doing, and your remarks upstairs were wonderful, so thank you for doing that. And thank you to Barbara, too, for the STEM courses at BU, that sounds great, so.
Yeah, I'd like to give a congratulations to the two seniors this year.
Yeah, thank you.
I think one thing that's become clear is that these are not students who just attend Boston, or attend Hingham schools, these are students who are included in all aspects of life in Hingham, from, you know, the sports and extracurriculars, to the community events, to, so I think it's really the entire town welcoming families into our community, so I think that's nice, and I love continuing that into the years ahead.
Yes.
So.
I'm grateful to Amy. I'm grateful to Amy for all of her leadership and for caring for um our MECO students and all of our students. And also wanted to give a shout out to Tina Kukka, who um is our MECO interventionist, who has also been a great support for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to seven point two is to review the draft calendar of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school committee meeting dates and act as appropriate. Let's pull them up. Okay, so we're going to try to set the calendar for the full year now. Um, we're being proa- oh, not proactive, proactive. And we're being uh, we're going to try and do one meeting in July, one meeting in August, the summer. See how it goes. Uh, and then I wanted to discuss the Saturday workshop date. Um, I know we don't have Michelle here, but she did give me some for availability days. You know, we typically have a Saturday workshop, we go over our goals. Does anyone have a preference to what Saturday? We usually do eight to eleven.
To the hard stop at eleven.
Hard stop at eleven. I think the previous, the last couple of years, we've been on a ten-thirty. Um, I was, I thought maybe we could do the sixth, but that's tough because it's right when school starts. So maybe the thirteenth. Does that work? Does the thirteenth work for everybody?
I can do that.
Yeah? Tim?
Yep.
Okay. Matt?
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Andrew spoke already.
Still trying to figure out this Saturday.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll pencil it in and then if things change, we can always move it around. Okay.
And I know, I know the locations are in here. Uh, if it, an opportunity opens up, I know while we're hearing a MECO update, if we wanted to do a meeting at MECO headquarters, and in years past we have, I think it would be.
Yeah, that was nice.
We'd welcome that.
Yeah. And there will be a new uh MECO director appointed at MECO Inc., so it might be a nice opportunity for us to go in and meet the new director. So I certainly can work with Amy and we could um take a look at um the days. I feel like we've previously done it. Was it November? Before budget season would be great. So maybe Amy and I could um connect uh with, with the new director once appointed and see if there's, there's an opportunity in November.
Yeah, you'll notice um from September to December, we're off the cycle for every other Mondays. It's just because the way that the, there are a lot of holidays in there. So we're just trying to avoid that. And um, we're trying to only do one meeting in December as well, to avoid some holidays.
Busy time of year.
Um, so pay attention to where the Mondays I don't. And then we get back into the routine um in January.
And for January, we'll leave a budget calendar into the as well.
Yeah.
And then we leave. Sorry.
Um, and for January, we'll also include the budget calendar.
Okay.
In terms of, and then we'll decide, I know this year we kind of tried to um have only those shorter agenda items for those budget days. Um, so maybe even the two days, the two meetings in January may have to be converted to budget meetings.
Yeah, and I think we started at six too on those.
Exactly, exactly. So there may be, I don't know if you want me to come back with the actual dates for the budget calendar um now, or if you just wait for the, the fall to be able to do that. Because I think maybe some of those, those times in January probably would change once we overlay the budget part of it.
Yeah, I think we can, why don't we stick with this?
Okay.
And then if we have to tweak
Yep.
the earlier times, because sometimes we have to work around, if we have executive session earlier before, we can work around that.
Okay, sounds good.
And that's why there are seven of us. If somebody can't make a meeting, it's all right.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes. Um, so the May meeting, I noticed that April twenty-seventh is town meeting and then the election is the following Saturday. And then our next school committee meeting is that following Monday. It's a little tight and we only have members that need to do any training. Um, I'm wondering if it makes sense to
Yeah, I think, I think I looked at possibly, I, I think it was because the holiday has our calendar right here.
I'm going to make it tonight. There we go.
Because if we did it on the
The eleventh.
The eleventh. So we could do the eleventh and the eighteenth. We could do back to back. Because we couldn't do, we couldn't do eleventh and the twenty-fifth because it's Memorial Day.
Right.
Do you want to do two back to back?
That's a little bit consistent this year too, though, isn't it?
Right, that's what, that's what made me think of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
I mean, did you, did you think it was tight with the way it went this year? John's uh, you know, a little. Okay. Yeah, all right, we're going to um change it to the, to minute to the eleventh, May eleventh.
Yeah, I know, exactly. He did, yeah. He's a tougher.
All right, I will um, we'll edit that and put a new copy in. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Do you want to vote on it?
Yeah. All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-sixth school year um school committee meeting dates with a revised date.
A second. Any more discussion? No. All right, roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to seven point three, which is to review school committee operating protocols. They are in the packet as well. Um, hopefully you got a chance to review them. Um, I think, um, John, I gave these um a copy to you as well when we did our um orientation. Um, Sherry printed out a copy for us to all sign um this evening. If everyone is willing to sign it tonight, we can do that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on to
Vivarons?
No, I think when you sign it, you're
That's your, that's your vote, okay. Sounds good.
All right, um, moving on to seven point four, which is to approve grants and donations. Ayesha, read anything?
Uh, no grants, all donation, all donation.
Okay. All right, so seven point five surplus, any surplus?
We have one surplus um memorandum in here, just, sorry, thank you.
Just, um, we have three Rico, two Rico um copy machines
Okay.
that are at the end of their lives um in terms of, it's not really worthwhile to try to fix those machines. And we have a water cooler from the central office that was broken that we just need to declare a surplus. And we will dis, we will um dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare a surplus items listed above and to authorize the Executive Director of Business and Student Services to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? No. Roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.
I love when you write out the motions, Ayesha.
I know. Okay, moving on to subcommittee and project reports. I don't know if we have.
No, I got a few.
Okay, come for it.
Uh, the Snap Spring fundraiser social was postponed till the fall, uh, so we can look for that on a fun weekend in the fall. I, I don't think we have a date yet for it. Um, and for the Human Rights Commission, uh, we'll be meeting uh on June ninth is our next meeting. But I do want to say that one of the uh, the, the, it's under the charter from the, that's the wrong word, but from the select board. And we have, uh, there's a spot on the committee. In addition to a school committee spot, there's a spot for a, a high school student. Uh, and that student was determined to be Graham Baker, uh, who was a student at Hingham High School, who is a wonderful, wonderful choice. So we're excited about that. Uh, and we will be having, um, we'll talk to, um, check in with Erica about getting dates for the, there'll be an early June, an educational programming subcommittee. Yep, great.
Uh, the middle school council was supposed to meet today. We didn't have a quorum, so, but there were a few people that showed up. So we just kind of, Derek gave us a kind of a heads up of what was going on. And uh, they're excited for fifth grade move-up day on Friday. And um, you mentioned the Anthony Valentine um talk that's coming up too, and Hingham Thursday. Sounds good. They're going to try to schedule a date in June to kind of talk about strategic or the school improvement plan for next year.
I've got nothing. I have nothing. Matt, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, I, I tested out the next, that's our committee meeting. Then uh, we had our east, final east school council meeting last Monday, last week. And we went through the school building plan with the management.
All right, thank you. All right, so uh, next up is um any kinds of forty-eight hours. We don't have anything. Um, I will mention that our next school committee meeting will be Monday, June second, at six thirty P M at Town Hall. And then after that, June sixteen, also a town hall. Um, item ten is to adjourn to executive session, not to return open session. So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, pursuant to Mastin Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three for the purposes of to approve minutes of the executive session held on March tenth, twenty twenty-five, to approve minutes of the executive session held on March, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, and to conduct strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and the chair is so declares.
I so declare. Okay. All those and fair is a roll call vote. Tim, uh, Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.